It is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting in order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is united. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, let's see. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We've got a motion by council member Pershman.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Uh, community comments. Presenters are welcome to address the city council for up to five minutes on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Specific requests for information may not be immediately available, in which case, follow-up will occur with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act upon requests. However, they will follow up accordingly and may schedule something for an agenda for future consideration. Is anyone here for a community comment? Reed, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Reed Welch. I live at eighteen thirteen Red Oak Ridge. Um, I just, uh, to follow up on the, uh, the speed limit sign, uh, that was discussed last meeting. Um, I do live on, just off Red Oak Ridge, which is right by Spring Creek Drive. And I know, um, that, that sign was put in there recently, and I know there's been some residents commenting about speed. I think it does every once in a while, like you say, you're driving, you look up like, oh, maybe a little quick, slow down a little. Um, but I think a good point, and actually we talked about this at the planning commission, commission meeting, maybe in May or a couple of months ago. Again, with the relation to Ironwood and some of the stuff by the school of trying to, um, get, I, I think they are helpful and useful. But I do think we shouldn't, like, go overboard. So I think, uh, maybe Brent's plan of trying to get a more formalized process of, you know, traffic counts or something, I think that would be an excellent idea. So I'm all in favor of that. So that's it.
All right. Thanks, Reed. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Uh, let's see. We have no public hearings this evening, but we do have a consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And a motion by council member Pershman.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sarah. Um, sorry, I almost wrote the wrong name down. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, all right. Business items. The city council vacancy.
Are we skipping five?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Uh, uh, yeah, we totally did skip it. I'm sorry, Bobby. Uh, come on up, presentations in reverse legislative update. We have State Representative Bobby Harder. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I thought our senator was coming. I, she was on the agenda, correct?
Hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
He's on the agenda, yeah. He must have something at the county fair, but.
Okay, I did remind him at the county fair, but. Okay, well, thank you so much for having me this evening. I appreciate. So on your desks, I don't, I didn't know. I have other copies for the people that want them. I, uh, a summary of what happened over, uh, the session is for you to review. I'm going to highlight just a couple of those, uh, areas. Um, one question I get asked by constituents, you know, describe the legislative session, and I guess the one word that I could use is probably challenging, uh, for a number of reasons. Um, I do have a expectation that government should be efficient, fiscally responsible with our money, and to be limited. However, uh, this session, more agencies were created, requiring more employees, which increases, uh, every area that affect people in our district. And there just seemed to be an insatiable appetite to increase taxes and add new fees, uh, and taxes to our residents, which is, uh, quite concerning. So despite, uh, this session beginning with a nearly eighteen billion dollar in surplus, independent upon what you read, some people write seventeen point five billion, some people write nineteen. Eighteen seems to be one that I could remember. Um, this was spent with nearly additional ten billion in tax increases. Um, I am thankful that we will be getting some of our monies back, two hundred and sixty dollars per person. I know that has reached people's accounts as they have reached down, asked, you know, about what that they were receiving. Uh, we were, we were told to begin with that we were going to get maybe two thousand and then a thousand. Um, like I said, I'm thankful that we are getting something back, uh, from the surplus. Uh, let's see. Some of the things that passed, um, this session, uh, people who are not citizens of Minnesota, they are going to be allowed to obtain a driver's license, which will look the same as yours and mine. There will be no difference in terms of orientation or color. Uh, they will also be allowed to enroll in men care and obtain free college, which is paid by taxpayers, which is kind of concerning because our tax dollars should be, uh, mainly for our residents, um, and not, not for others that are not citizens or residents of Minnesota. Public safety is important to all of us, and just a thought that perhaps not enough funds were used, uh, to recruit, retrain, uh, train and retain our law enforcement professionals. There was an increase in education, and this is fantastic for our, for our schools. However, there were over sixty-five mandates that schools are going to be required, and, uh, not sure how much that increase is going to actually get to our classrooms, which really could use, uh, the assistance. So during the legislative session, I, I get it, I've gotten just a number of emails, and I just want to highlight some of the emails that I got, uh, from the residents. People find that very interesting. I would say that the number one email that I got from people of our district, and that would be emails, phone calls, I got a number of postcards, and that would have to be with the very first bill that introduced into the House. It's known as the PRO Act, and that is abortion from conception up until birth of the baby. Um, and the emails and all the correspondence that I got, people were against having this bill passed. Uh, the second concern that residents voiced, uh, that they did not support is the restriction of our Second Amendment rights. People were against those bills that came forward. And then the third, uh, probably the most received email would have to do with the changes in the e-gaming, which affect our local organizations and the businesses that they do, uh, work with or do partner with. And so groups such as the Lions Club, I'm a Lions member myself, uh, we use those funds that we raise to help local organizations. A lot of times it's the youth. And so we are wondering, what are we going to do, you know, to raise funds to help people in our, uh, area? Uh, following the legislative session, I have visited with many, uh, residents, either at the fairs, city councils, uh, meet and greets, those kinds of events. And some of the concerns voiced by our, our residents would have to do with public safety, uh, education, and the overtaxation that's imposed on by the state, uh, which will affect our district and businesses, um, which are vital to our small communities. I've had a number of businesses voice, they're either thinking of relocating, or perhaps they might need to close because, uh, some of the things that were passed just will not do well for them. And the one case that I will, that I will mention, because I did talk to the owner, is that there was a pharmacy in the city of Winthrop. And they were struggling anyway. They were not making, um, a lot of money off of their prescriptions for whatever reason. You know, they might have a prescription that they would make three cents off. It's really hard to manage a business if you're making three cents a prescription. But she did say that after a number of the bills that passed, there was just no way that they could see a way, uh, to make income because of the number of bills that were passed. And then coincidentally, and also in the little town of Winthrop, a couple of weeks later, their only grocery store did close too. So it's going to be a real struggle, um, for people in our area. Uh, a couple of things that did pass, which are, are great, um, and one would be our nursing home funding. So, uh, monies did pass of three hundred million, uh, for our nursing homes, but, and over half of them have gone to direct payments to the homes. Uh, and the way that that's based is a flat rate of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then an additional four thousand sixteen dollars per bed. So this will help the three nursing homes within our district, and those are located in Arlington, Gaylord, and Winston. And, uh, Arlington for sure had reached out the last few months that they were struggling, uh, to find staff was probably the main thing. It's really difficult to find, um, employees. And then, of course, um, another hurrah, I guess, for our district is the number of projects that our district that were funded, which will help the city of Carver and Sibley County, um, with their flood mitigation. Uh, Gaylord and Watertown are all recipients of funds from the state, which is wonderful. Um, and I'm thankful that four of our projects, uh, either got partial funding or full funding that they were asking for. So that is, is great. And I do want to thank you for allowing me to come today to give you a brief update as to what has happened. I appreciate working on behalf of all the residents of our new district, which a lot of people are still getting used to, uh, the western part of Carver, east part of McLeod, and, uh, most of Sibley County. And, um, I do encourage people to reach out and to voice what is on their mind and what is most, uh, concerned to them, so they can continue to be your voice at the legislatures. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Now let's talk about the business items. Eight point one, the city council vacancy. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as, uh, the council knows, uh, council member, former council member McKnight, did resign from her position on August ninth, and so I've had a chance to connect with city staff. And there's a memo in your packet tonight that kind of lays out the options for how to, uh, fill that vacancy. As you can see, because less than two years are remaining on council member McKnight's, um, now vacant seat, there doesn't have to be a special election. But, uh, the council will have to come up with a plan for appointing a, an individual to, uh, serve in that capacity up through the time in which a, uh, a new council member is elected at the November twenty twenty-four election. And so, um, it's my understand, well, for the sake of tonight's meeting, the first step is something that we can and should get done tonight. And so there is a resolution in your packet, uh, resolution one three three dash two three, which declares the council vacancy. That's really a formality, uh, now that, uh, the vacancy exists. Um, and then after that, uh, resolution is adopted, it's the council's, um, prerogative to discuss a process through which it wishes to solicit interest in the position. As I allude to in the memo, there's really no formal or required process under state law. The city council is, um, able to come up with whatever process it wants, but I know staff has, uh, looked at different options, and I think there was a, uh, soliciting of applications that was done when there was a vacancy a few years ago, when, uh, Mayor Johnson was elected mayor, and that created a vacancy. So I think the process that I've talked with Brent about is similar to that process. It would involve reaching out to residents in Carver. Again, soliciting them to see if, if they're interested, and then potentially doing, um, you know, formal interviews or, uh, reviews of, of their, uh, credentials and their qualifications. The only, um, legal qualifications is that they're at least twenty-one years old. They are eligible to vote in the state of Minnesota, and of course, they are a resident of the city of Carver. So again, beyond adopting the resolution, which is step one, uh, in the memo of tonight, um, I think it's, I think we should talk about how we want to go through the next steps and potentially fill that vacancy. Timing wise, um, there's no requirement that it happens overnight or within a few months even. It's sort of, um, at your, at your leisure, but you should do it as soon as possible because it's always tricky to be shorthanded just in case people have to miss meetings. You don't want to flirt with having a quorum at future meetings. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully the memorandum, uh, in your packet makes sense. Uh, and then we can kind of go about the process and eventually fill the vacancy.
Sounds good. Um, Council, shall we take care of the first thing first and adopt the resolution? Because that seems like it might be just the easiest thing before we have a discussion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one thirty-three dash twenty-three declaring council vacancy.
Motion by council member Sarah.
I'll second.
Oh, I hear Christie. And a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right, um, let's see. I, well, there are three of us, with the exception of you, Eric, remember the last time that this happened where we put it out for applications, which I think is the way to go this time around again. I would love to see, and kind of to what Dave mentioned, I would love to see somebody here sooner rather than later. I want to see somebody in this, that seat, uh, by October first, if we can. So, um, I'm willing to have a special meeting for interviews. I think, um, this is a really high priority. It's budget season. We just have a lot.
When were you hoping to have someone in?
October first.
October first, okay. I'm out of town for part of September. That's the beginning part of September. That's all. But I agree. I mean, we literally filled the last open position after you took the mayor role with joy. So, and she was appointed through the application process. So I think that's the right way to go. Again, I'd like to see, um, who in the community is willing to put their name in the hat. Go from there.
I share the same thoughts. Um, I am out of town, middle October. And I might have some travel dates in September, but I'll get those to Brent, because I'm willing to, to meet in between regular meetings if we need to.
Yeah, if there's a special meeting date, again, I can send my out-of-town dates for September, but I think we'll have to come to a consensus on how we can all be here, because I think it's important that we're all here for it.
First Friday night council meeting. No, um, okay.
And I'm completely in support of an application process. I'd actually like to get a date on the calendar right away for us to spend a little time talking about it. I think we've had a, a couple of applications come in already. At least I've seen one via email and, uh, I think another was sent in.
Yeah, we'll need a formal process. So, yeah, yeah. I think the formal process starts tomorrow or whatever time we walk out of here. Brent raises hand.
I did, uh, Mayor and Council kind of map out, if you will, uh, kind of tentative schedule that hopefully can work, but we can adjust. So in order to.
We very rarely get out our phones.
Yes.
In order.
Not texting each other.
In order to make sure that we're reaching all the residents, we'd want to try to get it in our September newsletter, which, um, would be in mailboxes around the first. So tentatively, I have this as applications due on Wednesday, September thirteenth. And then we would plan for, now I'm going to pull up my calendar here, because I want to make sure I got these dates right. Yep, Wednesday, September thirteenth. And then since we have a council meeting on the eighteenth, I'm skipping that because we'll have a full work session and regular council meeting. But then I, uh, tentatively have kind of penciled in, uh, Monday, September twenty-fifth as the interview date. So you'd have a clean evening to kind of run through all the applicants. I think, you know, we did it for Mayor Johnson. We also did it when, uh, former Mayor Webb was, um, elected, uh, from council to mayor. And so, you know, you could have upwards of ten applicants. So you'll, I think, want to have it on a separate night. So if the twenty-fifth works, that would be the interview, and then you'd have time to deliberate and select. And then we'd have, uh, that council member appoint, if you will, take the oath of office on Monday, October second, prior to your work session.
The twenty-fifth works for me.
How about you guys? It works for me, but it's Yom Kippur. And I, that's a pretty important religious holiday that I would hate to.
Twenty-sixth, Tuesday?
Monday, the twenty-fifth. Oh, I'm sorry. You're suggesting another day.
For September. Um, because Courtney would like to avoid the twenty-fifth, the Monday, right? So the twenty-sixth.
I could do the Wednesday, the twentieth.
I cannot.
The twenty-sixth is the Parks Advisory Group meets.
How about Thursday, the twenty-first, or is that a planning commission?
That is. What about Wednesday, the twenty-seventh?
I'm open.
I'm open.
Oh, my gosh.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Put it in there now.
Once we're ready, yeah. Everybody take two seconds and.
Okay, so the twenty-seventh?
Wednesday, the twen- ooh, wow, that did not type right.
At what time are we looking at?
It looks like the city attorney wants to say something.
No, I just wanted to jump in to clarify to, um, Brent. I think the intent would be to, the, the interviews would be conducted on that evening, and then there'd be council discussion and appointment following those interviews. The oath would then take place at the, the oct- the first meeting in October, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that, um, that was the plan, so that we can appropriately prepare the, um, special meeting notice and that kind of thing.
So the twenty-seventh of September, yes?
Yep.
And then are we looking, what giving it time ish? It's got to be after.
Yeah, I would plan probably for seven o'clock.
Do we want to go that late, depending on, I mean, do you want to start at six-thirty? I would go a little earlier than seven.
You tell me what time you'd like to start.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Okay.
And just as a note, it's, um, we have in the past, um, those meetings were, they're obviously have to be open to the public, but we did, um, broadcast those, so that would be the intent unless the council feels otherwise.
Do we discuss the candidates in the closed session after, or it has to be open?
Open.
Okay. I don't. If you're going to be on council, you're going to be on camera, so I guess, I guess, might as well get used to it.
So then, and just kind of another kind of add-on to that is, uh, a list of a half a dozen or so questions, however many we come up with, is typically, um, what we present to the council, and then you ask the candidates those same questions. I'm not sure if they fall under any other, like, um, regular HR, human resource rules as far as, you know, asking different questions.
Technically, council members are not employees, and so prospective council members, it's not, it's a little different than going through the formal hiring process. Um, although we can, as staff, maybe prepare some questions that might be appropriate, and then I'm, you know, the council can certainly ask any questions you might think of that evening that might be, um, you know, on-the-fly type questions or things you come up with during the interviews. Of course, the person who, the guinea pig who goes first will not have had the, uh, ability to listen to the same questions that everyone else will get, but, um, you know, that's okay.
And my, just a couple of things related to that. My intention would be to show a draft of the questions to the council at the, um, meeting on the eighteenth. And that we would, uh, tradition, since we've done this a couple of times, is that we do a blind draw for order. So.
So does that mean the questions then can be viewed if they choose to look at them?
Yeah, I mean, that's not our intent to surprise the applicant. They'd be given, uh, most likely, along with their time, a list of the questions that are going to be asked.
And then from there, we could say, Christie, tell me more about that answer. We could dive deeper.
Sure.
And not have to remain consistent throughout.
No, I think, yeah, you can, you can deviate.
Okay.
You know, I think for the sake of time, depending on how many applicants you have, you probably want to be efficient. But I don't see any issue with, you know, sort of each interview, um, evolving into certain questions and asking people to elaborate and that sort of thing.
Do you mean that I have a template for this from the last time we did this?
We do. Doesn't mean you have to use it, but we have a list of questions that were used in twenty eighteen, nineteen? Template.
Okay, okay. I think we're good. All right, um, oh, uh, we have a lot of, or some, let's see. Our closed session is at seven forty-five? Is that right?
I think that was just a placeholder on the calendar, but it is, um, it can take place just naturally falls into the agenda.
Okay, we can hit it. Okay. I wasn't sure if I had to be mindful.
It's part of the regular meeting agenda.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, then, um, let's see. Maybe before we go into communications, we'll go through the stuff that we did not get to in our work session.
Pardon?
That's okay. Um, before we get into item number nine, communications, we'll go through the stuff that we didn't get to from the work session.
Mm-hmm.
All good? Okay. Council, we kind of left awkwardly at the end of the draft tenure vehicle.
I'll jump in. I didn't contribute much when we were talking about the drone. But if you want to pick up from there.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, um, I definitely would support having it purchased sooner, maybe it's twenty twenty-five. And I was remembering more than once, I've read one of the reports that we get from, um, first responders, and like a teenager was, you know, didn't want to be a missing child, didn't want to be a runaway, and that they were searching the blocks. And that wasn't too long ago.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would support it sooner than what was first presented.
All right. Eric?
Well, I don't have any additional comments from the work session. What else did we not get to?
I just wanted to make sure that we gave this enough space, because it got a little tight at the end of this one. We also, so just while we're talking about the, uh, draft tenure vehicles and equipment plan, does anybody, are there any adjustments? Well, we talked about adjustments. I think the drone was the only thing that we shared feedback on. Climinary observations, any questions?
Do we want to make that clear for anybody that didn't pay attention to the work session, what the change is? Is that important?
For the drone, you mean?
Yeah.
I think we talked about it a whole lot during the work session. So this is a little out of context for anybody who wasn't at the work session. For those of us who are here tonight, um, I would recommend that you watch the work session video tomorrow morning or at your leisure. Um, okay, so then I'm hearing that we are moving on to the next item?
Yes.
Okay, so the draft tenure building and facilities plan.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. So in the, the same pathway as the tenure staffing plan, the tenure vehicle and, uh, equipment purchase plan, we're doing a building and facility maintenance plan. The pathway is the same, so we identify the, the maintenance needs through our spring and fall building inspections. Uh, then we work with finance to develop that tenure plan, and then we present the plan to you tonight and request some feedback if there's any adjustments or refinements that need to be made. So again, the tenure to, to six year is conceptually based just on, uh, inspections and projections and anticipated needs. We move from five years to three years. That tran- uh, transition period becomes, uh, uh, from conceptual to more of a justification. And then, uh, year two to one, we focus in on a lot of those needs and then plan it in the budget. And then that facility maintenance occurs in budget year zero. So our first building is a public utilities building at one seventeen Broadway. Um, there is no maintenance scheduled for this because it's planned to be demolished in, uh, the next one to three years. And the neighbor to the PU building is the Church by the River, who was built in nineteen thirteen, and, uh, is one oh nine Main Street East. So during our spring inspections, we did notice that, uh, there was some roof damage. We repaired it temporarily, and then are planning for a full re-roof in twenty twenty-four. And again, in spring, spring inspections, we also noticed, uh, some exterior, uh, siding dry rot. So we're looking at, uh, painting and repairing that siding in twenty twenty-six, and then replacing the interior HVAC unit in, uh, twenty thirty-two.
I have a question about the Church by the River.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to be beyond you chat also. So is this zoned to be, can it be a commercial? Can it be a getaway cafe? Can it be, uh, you know, an environmental learning center? Can it be any of those things? Oh.
The current zoning is public institutional, so, I mean, you could rezone it, so potentially, but right now, it couldn't be converted to a commercial use.
Okay.
The, um, thinking that's gone on related to the Church by the River with the group that worked on kind of the Parks Master Plan was that, uh, when the downtown park is created, that the Church by the River would take in, um, and then, I would say, mo- and more enhanced, uh, recognition of a rental space, so that, right now it's being used as a rental space, but, uh, you know, indoor bathroom, you know, birthday parties, you know, if someone's going to use some of the amenities at the city park. Um, if, you know, there's going to be a mini amphitheater in there. So, uh, some of the thinking was related to if there's, uh, a play that's put on or a concert, that that can be like the change room area for people to do costume changes, et cetera. Beyond that, that's, uh, what's been thought of related to the Church by the River and its relationship with that future city park.
Okay. The reason I bring it up is that, while we do rent it out some, um, when we're looking at, didn't the Lord just come into our phones? When we're looking at this, when the cost of maintaining it, eating it, cooling it, all of that, and for the amount of, you know, small amount of revenue that we're gaining from this, um, and the rest, and we do use it as a space where, you know, there's certain groups who, um, use it for free, but really, we're bringing in very, very little. Is this something we can look at selling and having it rezoned and having another business? We have, the downtown doesn't. We have, the downtown doesn't expand, you know, because it's, one, it's landlocked, it's historic, all of that. So our business space, that's why the HPC got together and the council and everyone. Spent some years, so I'm pulling here hard, but the. Or you can do a commercial on the first floor in the district down here in order to open up new ways to have people to have businesses down here if they wanted them. So when I look at this building, I love it, I love historic buildings. But is there maybe a chance that we are able to sell this to a business person who wants to put in something? Else in there rather than carrying it as one of our yearly costs?
Didn't we explore that a couple of years ago in our strategic planning session?
I don't remember.
Thought it was mentioned, maybe by you.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Can you remind me of the history of it? It was renovated by the Lions?
And sold to the city for one dollar.
Correct. The council did review this in a strategic plan, what was more related just to understanding maintenance costs. You know, the. The willingness to sell is a hundred percent the prerogative of the council. From a maintenance perspective, I think all the things that council member Mock said are correct, it's. There's an exceedingly high level of maintenance of that building. It's, it is rented, but we have facilities for rental. If you, if that's a path that you want us to go down, we can certainly investigate it and. You know, get an appraisal done and, you know, see what, you know. If there are any unintended consequences to not owning that property. Et cetera, floodplain zoning. You just have to tell us you want the conversation to be started.
I'm curious about it, again, just for the simple fact of a building that it is, to me, it's very beautiful. But it does sit there empty most of the time. Is there something that we can add to our community that's going to make it more useful to us and a better use space? And whether that means when the park goes in, that that becomes that area, maybe. Maybe we look at what, what is an appraisal, what could we sell it for? And what, you know, what, again, with the flooding and the flood zone and what, what could it be if we were to sell it?
I would be concerned that that building doesn't really lend itself to commercial use. And if we sell it, don't we open the doors then to lose it? Because if I own the property as a commercial property, I'd want to have something tailored to my business, not. Maybe not care about the historic nature of the building.
Well, you're governed by the historic things anyways on at least the exterior. But I see what you're saying, that you could lose the interior part of it. And I mean, I've seen many businesses in old churches, depends, it just has to be the right thing. I mean, most people aren't going to go put their computer business in here, right?
I would see its utilization going up with the park that we're creating. You know, maybe. So you make a valid point, for sure. I, I, I get wanting to maybe explore that, but. I think it may be premature as we're about to open up a city amenity right next to it, or it could see higher utilization. That's my knee jerk response.
I agree with you, Eric. I, I certainly see the rolling list of maintenance. I think it's good that we're taking care of this so that we don't look at this ten years down the road and say, why is the roof caving in? But I, I don't have a strong desire to sell this. And I have a stronger concern about the unintended consequences of the folks who are still. Valuable contributors in our community who had blood, sweat and tears put into that building when it was renovated decades ago. So I'm worried about the unintended consequences of that. And I think it might not be used a ton right now. There's certainly plenty of activity in the backyard of that spot right now.
Yeah, community guards would have to be relocated.
I, I don't feel a strong desire to, to look into that.
I think it's something to maybe visit every five, ten years. But like right now, to me, that is just part of the historic charm. And that not just the actual physical building, but the members of the community that have contributed to it. And also, if it's in our budget to pay for these things and we can afford to keep it, maintain it, I think the city. Right, we're looking at our tax percentages here, so I'm not sure about that. But I will say that, thank you, I just wanted to put that out there to council to just see if there was any other thoughts on it. And if there's not, then that's fine with me.
No, I appreciate that and Brett knows, but sometimes I'll be like, I just need to say this out loud. Say this, so. Feel free to always throw it out.
Yes, thanks for everyone.
Yeah.
Comment.
Ready? So Carver Station, sixteen oh seven Hartwell Drive, built in two thousand fifteen. We did notice some settling around the exterior of the building. Nothing structural, but we do have some side rock replacement or repairs to do in twenty twenty-four. And then just planning for a re-roof around that twenty thirty-three. Year. And then.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On those last two slides, is the roof cost about the same? Was the other one thirty thousand?
Because of the steep slopes, the second story, and the number is square, it would be a little bit different. But I may not have put too much in inflation into that one. And then three sixteen Broadway or Carver City Hall, built in two thousand nineteen with the newness of this building. No planned projects within the next ten years.
I like seeing that, Eric, just knowing that we're looking at this, you know.
Yes.
So I'm going to, Mayor and Council, I'm going to jump in on the fire station public services. So if you've been kind of following along from our last work session, we're, with the council's permission and direction, we're kind of taking a step back from our. Original plans to build around ten thousand square feet kind of directly to the west of the public services building and. The building addition for the turnout gear storage for the fire department. And these numbers are kind of intended kind of to the mayor's comments to be a little bit like big gulp, a little. We are in the process of kind of re-engaging our architects to look at the idea of maybe building out a little bit more of a significant project. It's, it's not a secret related to what properties we're taking a look at, they're listed by PID, but essentially. Mueller's owns nine acres just to the south of these existing fire station public services building. And so a closed session is related to negotiating a price for that or the council's consideration of that. So put an estimate in there for that, but essentially the thinking is, and this kind of bore out since the last council meeting, but. The soil borings came back for the proper, for the area that we were looking to build. And they came back as poor, so we would have had to invest additional dollars beyond what the first blush estimate was for our building space. And the, the thinking is, as you looked at the vehicles and the equipment plan, we're going to be adding. We don't want to be in a position where we add ten thousand square feet and come back to the community and say, well, in five years and say, we need another five thousand or ten thousand. And so doesn't mean we know exactly where we're going to land, but the goal within the next few months is to give the council some scenarios and options of. How you may want to balance the need for space and the tax impact and the amount of investment. And so you can see some of those elements here. So kind of some estimates on land, investments into rooftop units and re-roof and a new salt storage. Replacement, excuse me, of the salt storage facility. And then we're, you know, looking at ways to be more cost effective with these dollars. But these are intended to be some high estimates for fire department turnout gear storage. And then public service, services, vehicle and equipment storage. And again, this, these numbers can be on a spectrum based on your appetite to invest into the future, available resources. Impact to the community. So our hope is, as we develop those. Numbers and scenarios with a little bit more clarity and with the council on board, we would go out and. Develop frankly, a community engagement process that was similar to the city hall and say, okay, this is what we came up with, you know. Do listening sessions, et cetera, to kind of see where our next direction is. I think where we were last time was more of a five to ten year plan. And as you can see in number three. We at least want to have the council and the community contemplate a fifteen to twenty year plan, see what those costs are, see what that project looks like. So those numbers in there related to, to bonding year are somewhat arbitrary on the bottom two. The, the top ones related to the land and the maintenance are items that will probably come up sooner rather than later. And then just here is kind of a, just an overall picture of the existing site to the left. And then you can kind of get a, an idea of. Land available to the south of the existing site. So again, talking in kind of big generalities here. So I appreciate your patience as we try to develop the scope for the, for the council and the community.
Having all of that in twenty twenty-five gives me heart palpitations, just so you know.
I think it does everyone.
Yes. I don't know if you're the only one.
Any questions, comments?
I mean, we're still pretty early in the development here. I know we had talked about that building having the largest roof area potentially suitable for solar. And maybe a study of what the ROI would be on that.
Yep, it's solar, it's. And just, we haven't been in a lot of positions where. Overpromising and underdelivering has met anyone's expectations. So to say, I don't know if we could physically get it done in twenty twenty-five, but to tell you it's twenty twenty-eight and then say, hey, we're going to do it in twenty twenty-six. I think that leaves people with the wrong impression. So if we say twenty twenty-five and our story and our narrative and the project doesn't work out. Pushing it back, I think, provides us with a better and a safer spot to retreat and have additional discussion. Rather than, at this point, it would be just my own personal guess. And I'd rather start with something that gives you and the community heart palpitations and then say, okay, when are we ready to? Have this discussion and when are we ready to make the investment and what does that investment look like? And it, granted, it, it's hard to have a conversation about that level of investment and have none of the details. And so that's where like the patience part, it comes in for, I think, all of us is, you know, let us gather that information. We are in this position right now where at least we want to have it identified in the long-term plan. So that you can get a sense of how this all flows together. Hopefully, under a worst case scenario, and then if you say, no, this scope is too big, we don't, we can't afford to do twenty years right now. We can afford to do ten or five or somewhere more or less. But at least you'll have that foundation of, okay, this is, this is, this is everything. And then we can take up, take away as, as that comfort level grows.
Any other questions, adjustments? For me, again, I like seeing this all down on paper and it is scary and as big as some of those numbers are. I think that these are, for better, for worse, more realistic numbers than what we have been looking at previously. So I like seeing this, I think we're heading in the right direction, I think we're making the right kind of investments in our community. And there are also a lot of downs that have to fall before we get to many of these projects, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad. Okay, nine point one communications. Any questions on the monthly reports? If not, no.
No.
Head it over to Brent for city manager updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to sneak back to our twen- twenty twenty-four budget, if I can get to it on my screen here. So I just wanted to provide a clarification piece that I misstated during the budget. So we do have, if you notice here in the public services proposed, we do have a hundred thousand dollars allocated. It's, but it's unallocated for a specific purchase in that, in the draft that you saw tonight of the twenty twenty-four general fund budget. So it's designed to decrease your reliance on issuance of debt going forward. So that if you have capital that exceeds your annual contribution, you're able to fund it. So I updated my memo. I had indicated that that was a backfill for the Third Street project, so we'll have that updated. But again, that's another piece that if you feel like that's being too aggressive and you want to back that off for levy relief. Based on where you see the tax impact going and just for those that are in the audience or watching. We presented the council with the first draft of the budget, kind of under a kind of a similar fact pattern, frankly, as the public services building where. We don't have tax capacity and market value information from Carver County. And so we'll have that for the next work session. And the kind of combination of a proposed levy and that first draft of the budget with tax capacity. Should give the council enough information to provide staff with some solid feedback on comfort level of where the levy should be. The council needs to adopt a preliminary levy by the end of September, which is actually planned for your second meeting in September. So any questions before I move on from the budget item? Moving on to my update for the council.
Just a few updates?
Just a few updates. We provided administrative approval for Carver County to build a temporary restroom enclosure or porta potty, if you will. So you can see on the kind of where the blue dot is or pin, the county is planning to build a enclosure to screen. The porta potty. I don't think we have a date, they're just kind of assembling their project approvals. The JCP landscaping work that was done with the construction project is under a two-year warranty. And there's close to sixty trees that are going to be replaced or straightened out as a part of that project. So we don't have a schedule yet from the contractor of when that work will begin. But there are plans sent out to the landscaping contractor related to that work. There are some recent legislative changes that were made to how cities can control weed ordinance, lawn grass, et cetera. So Dave and Aaron Smith are working on that. And so you should see what amounts to be kind of a administrative amendment to our own codes to, to reflect the new law changes. So that's something that you'll see at an upcoming meeting, similar to the city's floodplain ordinance. So Aaron Schmidt and Dave are working on that. The Southern Valley Alliance is going to be providing a presentation to the council on October second. So they're an advocate for domestic violence victims. Mark Metz, the county attorney, will also be presenting to the council on October second. Regular city hall office hours are going to resume on Tuesday, September fifth, following Labor Day. So that's back through, Monday through Friday from eight to four thirty. I would say that I believe that our summer hours, our season hours was a success. We didn't, to my knowledge, get any critical feedback, at least that we heard of. And I think the, the team enjoyed having those alternate hours. So thanks to the council for supporting that initiative. Southwest Transit is going to be using Carver Station for state fair bus queuing. I mentioned this specifically. So early on in the city's, I would say, partnership with Southwest Transit as kind of an introduction to their service menu. Southwest at no cost provided state fair service, service to Vikings games, Twins games, et cetera. For, I would say, close to six or seven years, that service hasn't been provided. It could be at additional cost to the city. But there, I think there's an ongoing community conversation related to a want for that service in certain pockets of the city. And so when you see those buses queuing up, that conversation might become unearthed, if you will. And so just to let you know, it's for queuing, you can, I don't have this. Available right now, but I, I'm assuming they're going to provide their typical service from East Creek and Eden Prairie, Chanhassen, et cetera.
Brent, with that, do you know what that'll look like? Is that going to be a couple of buses? Is it going to be? Brent, with that, do you know what that'll look like? Is that going to be a couple buses? Is it going to be two dozen buses?
I don't. Could be anything frankly.
Can we make sure, because you're right, that's still a pain point for both residents who are concerned about that, who still reach out to me to this day about that. Um, but can we make sure that there's some signage or it's really, or they turn off the whatever it is, the placard in the front that says state fair, so that it's really clear that they're.
Sure. So they're not going to be queuing in like the bus ramp? They're going to be queuing in the parking, they're just going to be parking in the parking lot?
Still, I just don't.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can make sure that there's signage there.
And I don't think that's on us. I think Southwest Transit. I think they traditionally do and for a number of years did after we
Yep.
stopped getting that service. So.
Great River Greening. So we have two projects that we're working uh, with them on the uh, Creekside Park project. I think we're expecting October, Erin?
Correct.
Uh, so um, for some of that work, uh, to do creek restoration down uh, near Creekside Park and Carver Creek running through that. And then Erin and I met with uh, Great River Greening. So if you remember, uh, we were, they were, they funded the city on a prairie restoration project in Riverside Park. So this is the, the concept drawing that we showed them. I did want to have a conversation. I discussed uh, this preliminary with council member Mock this afternoon. There's a intersection here of kind of, I would say like established norms in the community versus what this park looks like going forward that I wanted to to name and have the council discuss. Uh, there's a concrete pad that's in the kind of the middle of the project area that would be proposed to come out with the project. Uh, but just even an item like the Soggy Bottom Tournament and new plantings and how that intersects with the Soggy Bottom or other events that might uh, happen on an annual basis. Just wanted to make sure before we went too far that we were in lockstep with the council on expectations uh, so that um, we weren't in a position to try to mitigate some type of miscommunication uh, once the project was under construction. So anticipating a project would start probably spring of 24.
Okay, so maybe I'll go first if that's all right, Courtney. So Brent and I had talked earlier today. So obviously we um, there's been, this year would be the 15th year of the Soggy Bottom Fund ready down there. Now, does that mean that um, I think that we need to plan an entire park around a one time a year event? Absolutely not. But when we're looking at timing, when you, you said so spring of 2024? So you could get one more down there. And then Brent had actually mentioned saying once Creekside is in, maybe that would be a new location for it. And that's a great, that's a great idea. So if, you know, if it's, what, what's the timing for Creekside then for, for that again?
So the work that Brent mentioned in October is just creek restoration. Park construction in earnest can't begin likely until spring 2024.
Goodbye, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
So.
Sorry, say that again.
Likely similar timelines for Riverside and Creekside. Rivers, uh, Creekside will likely just take a bit longer because it's more work.
And so when we're talking with the plantings and the establishment of that, um, you know, really the event that happens is on that concrete pad and right in front of it. And then there's trails that are gone around, which could certainly, if, if these native perennials are there, they should be able to withstand being pushed down and come back up. I mean, that's what they're meant to do, right? So certainly something we could look at later in between when this park kind of stops from what the use has been and to when Creekside comes up. Um, the one thing I brought up to Brent though is that oftentimes within these nature parks, you will see a stopping point somewhere in the, the trail, the plantings where people can sit, have a, there's a picnic table or a little tiny gazebo to get out of the sun. So when I look at this plan, we have a big oval and there's nothing cutting through the middle of it. So where the, I guess where the puff of trees is. To maybe come back down, have something there where that concrete pad is. Maybe that concrete pad leaves at some point to have some kind of a way stop there where you can sit down, have your sandwiches with your kids, whatever it might be. Um, so I guess that's something that I see is not in the plan. Um, and what do we need to do if that's something we want to consider?
The council would have to say that's what.
What we want to consider. So I mean, obviously the, the concrete pad would go. But I do think we have an opportunity to have kind of a cut through there rather than have just one big long oval.
Just, just a one clarification point and it's, it's not defined like as you're describing council member Mock, but just to the west of the uh, boat landing or boat launch parking lot, they do have conceptually some picnic tables. Doesn't necessarily mean that's what you're looking for. I just wanted to point that out.
I think we're just having some differences in where you can walk to. If you're, you know, maybe you're not uh, as able-bodied any longer and walking that entire strip is too far, but you'd like to take a little jaunt through half of it. So I would like the council to consider that we add some kind of midpoint there and we can look, it doesn't have to be right now, but we look at maybe getting a picnic table out there or something. Um, I realize we might have to weed whip around it, but um, at the minimum, I'd like to see another piece of trail that comes through there.
So I think, I guess I would like to see the concrete pad taken out because I think this is going to be a really lush, one-day nature, natural park. And I don't, with nature comes mosquitoes and bugs. And I don't think that people are going to want to be having their picnics right in the center. I think that the, the picnic tables that we've seen and planned for are sufficient. I think it's a good area for that. You know, we've seen this before and we've gone over this before. I don't know that you were at that meeting, but this is, this is what we submitted as part of the grant proposal, correct, for the Great River Greening grant? So it seems a little like to switch it and to have this conversation now. I also think that if folks can't walk very far, there is an option because there appears to be a little bit of a trail between the boat launch parking and the new parking, the River Vista parking, maybe. So there's that trail that can be walked as well as, you know, other areas. I would argue that if folks are having mobility issues, that an uneven natural terrain trail is not where they're going to be going to get their steps in. And I, you said it, but I'm glad, you know, I, I do thank the Creekside, especially given like the potential, the future plans for that park with the we can't get safer as we golf, it's disc golf. Um, with the disc golf that's planned to go there, like boy, your folks can like test it out and figure out exactly where we need to go. Um, so I don't, and even if this was to return down to Riverside someday, I don't think that leaving that concrete pad in for one four-hour event is.
No, and I agree. I'm, I'm, I agree with you on the concrete pad. So, so it was, it was something at first to say, okay, yeah, I do care about it. But when Brent and I were talking and with the option of Creekside coming up, I, you know, that's not something I'm like going to fight to keep this old concrete pad there. Um, I do feel that I disagree with what you're saying about if you have mobility issues. I don't want to ever pretend to say that someone couldn't do half a loop rather than the full loop because I, after working in Park and Rec for many, many years, there are certainly people who go out there who may not be able to make the mile, but can do the half a mile, whether it's uneven or it's flat. So I would like to see some consideration for another piece cutting through there. On top of that, this is one point that I made some time ago. The bottom piece here where there's that trail, we've, we've got the boat launch and you have the new, yes, thank you Brent. You have campsites here. And if you have children or let's say you have a group that's renting down there, I have always been opponent of keeping this a mowed area. We have to mow for the archery range. We have to mow for the campsites anyways. That there's a place for kids to have a pickup soccer game if they're down there, that you could throw a ball around. Because otherwise, yes, you have these little spaces next to the river. You're not going to play there because the ball is going to go off the edge. Here you have a tree line that blocks it. So I'm really, and I've said, this part I've said many, many, many times, I want to see that continued grass mowed area so that we have some open recreation activity area for families or people to use down at that park.
Chad, we're not mowing that. That was something we talked about earlier this year. We're not mowing that currently, correct?
In between the parachute beds and the campsites?
In between kind of the two parking lots. On this, where Brent's got his pointer.
Yep, and I haven't been happy with that. So.
That was something that I think we've already.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it was a, it was a, it was discussed at the 5.1 meeting and you submitted your comments and it was a, a four-o vote at that meeting.
I don't recall exactly what that meeting.
You weren't there.
Okay, so but many times I have stated that I wanted to this outside of, we were going to let everything go for this year because they were going to not mow, just in general. And the last that I recall was that it was, we're going to come back to this to figure, to, to really redefine some of this area. And so I guess I'm missing what, I, I don't think I've missed that many meetings in the last year. So I must have been ill or something.
I don't remember. You submitted comments and they were red.
Okay. Okay, well, I will just state for the record that I am not happy with that bottom piece being put into just the native plantings because I think we need a place for people to recreate that. And it's a flat area um, down there.
Yeah.
So.
And I think, and we'll give you guys a second to talk. I'm sure you have just as much to say about this as Christine and I do. But you know, what we were talking about when the proposal was not to mow during that May 5th, or I'm sorry, May 1st meeting was that it was hard on our equipment. It was harder on our personnel. Chad shared the story of the public services individual who brought in not one but two pillows from home so that he could put it between the seat of the mowing apparatus and his keister because it was a very rough ride through there. So I think I took a look at that meeting this afternoon and the summary of that was that we wanted to keep it more natural in terms of expanding the longevity of our equipment, the safety of our staff and the amount of ti- shortening the amount of time that was spent maintaining this park.
Yep, and it would shorten the amount of time because it's not the entire park. It's just a, a small piece that's on that same side. So I think I've said my piece.
Thoughts? Yeah. I don't remember with this grant, if it included anything for the boat launch. Like, and the picture, it looks like it's, you know, really smooth. I mean, that would be an improvement, but is there any, does this grant include any improvements to the boat launch?
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna um, share some information. I just need to pull it together first, but DNR has um, grant money that's for making um, all parks and especially boat launches more accessible. So. Yeah, more to come. I'll forward it to Brent. He can share it with the council. But as far as the um, yeah, so I'm sorry, I've just been like focused on the, the boat ramp, the boat launch. Uh, I support the not mowing it. Part of it too is we have, now we have more parks. We have the new Ironwood. We have other places that you could have more of that amenity of just open green space.
So I'm looking at this and I don't recall being a meaningful part of the development of this park. I do recall the discussion around mowing and I know that I voted not to mow it based on uh, the, the issues with, with um, the machine and, and personnel. As you were talking about the concrete pad, I was thinking, well, that seems like a, a pretty good way to put a tent up in that area, but obviously there's been a discussion to remove that. So I'm not going to debate that. Is there anything that can be done for grading that would make that area an open area and easy to maintain? Or is it, is it not worth it? I'm, I'm really not familiar with that part of the land there.
I was just going to say like you can, I think the struggle has been with the team is that every, when we have a flood event, that's when like all the sediment comes in and so you.
I recall that.
It's not a matter of can you do it? Because we could, it's just a model of uh, what do you want to invest and provide for an amenity in that park?
Okay. So the only deliberation I recall being a part of was, was the mowing. And I was one of the people that voted not to mow for that, for the recommendation that I heard at that time.
I think my other concern is, and I'm not sure that not mowing will a hundred percent solve the issue, but unfortunately, folks who like to go mudding, it's been a favorite place of that element. Uh, folks who are downtown and just ripping up and really trashing the park. And so I worry that if there's an open area that it would be more inviting for the folks who are inclined to do that. But um, I think we have three votes on no mowing.
I think we do. Um, I do want to just mention one more thing though. So, go back please Brent. A piece of trail cut through there, through the middle. The councils, the rest of the council is not in favor of that.
I guess I haven't gotten like that part detail. I, I thought this was even actually just maybe a mowed trail. Like, I don't think that it was a hard surface. I thought it was just.
Right, but if you're going to put plantings in, you're not going to put them in and then mow them over afterwards. So that's why I'm bringing that up. It's a waste of time and money to put plantings in the, mow it.
Yeah, I guess I don't see enough of that stage of the detail yet where there's plantings. I, I thought those were maybe already existing trees. But I don't think there's much vegetation being added.
The entire like yellow area within that loop would be native prairie. So that, those would be new plantings. We'd be reestablishing that area.
Is it all of the yellow color, like to the south, the area that we just discussed?
So this plan was created by Bolton and Mink. Great River Greening is trying to match up the amount of funding they have with the space that we have. So the park in total is about seven acres. We likely have funding for about four. So they're working out the details to marry this plan with what they can do for the plantings right now.
What is the, the green oval? Is it?
Mowed trail.
Okay. Do we have any mowed trails? Well, actually I know that there's one that I discovered kind of in the bluffs, but I think it's actually just a few people's.
Oh my God, what were you doing in their backyard?
I didn't know the trail kept going in there.
You're going to get arrested, Lori.
It didn't. It didn't, Lori. Oh, do we have any?
No, not to this level.
I'm not hearing a huge push to have a cut through. Okay? That's unfortunate, but that is the way it goes for it.
And then a couple other pieces. Um, uh, Aaron Smith and Dan Lannas are facilitating a neighborhood meeting for kind of what we're calling the kind of the gateway to Carver, the former Casa 40 or Colony Road 40. Uh, so we're trying to hit all the folks that would be impacted kind of in the Main Street and Oak Street uh, areas of the downtown prior to uh, doing a big lift on community feedback on the corridor planning. So uh, planning to have a table and a series of boards at the fire department's annual open house. Feel like that'll be the best way to hit the most people. And then we'll have some uh, pieces in upcoming newsletters. And then finally, there's a fire board meeting a week from today. And uh, the fire department is uh, going to be facilitating the discussion on looking at two used Chevy Tahos from the city of Chanhassen that could uh, potentially replace some future new purch- future years, new purchases of uh, vehicles. So um, fire board, uh, which includes council member Mock and council member Sayer, along with our uh, partners from Dalgrid and San Francisco Townships will be looking at those vehicles on, on Monday. So those are my updates. Happy to answer uh, questions on projects or uh, programs that I may not have covered.
I just, question about the restroom enclosure. Is that a, is that in the HPC district?
Correct.
And so it has to be approved by that?
We, we have administrative approvals. So I issued one on behalf of the city today because it's meets the guidelines for its, its wood cedar fence. So.
And it's going to look just like that-ish?
It'll have, it'll be around different stuff, but it'll look like that probably.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, uh, council member updates. Eric, would you like to go first?
Uh, so I attended the Carver Business Alliance meeting on Monday. Couple things there. So I attended the Carver Business Alliance meeting on Monday. Couple things there.
It was Friday.
Was it Friday? Oh, wow. Yeah, okay. Carissa from Healing Hands said they're looking forward to a soft launch, and then it'll follow up with a full-service clinic when everyone gets trained on the equipment. So they have to get acclimated to the things that they use for anesthesiology and such. Hometown Banks Grand, not the grand opening, the
Groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking is going to be
That's like the grand opening.
So that's on the twenty-ninth of this month at one o'clock. So a couple things from that meeting.
I just have one meeting coming up next Monday, the fire board meeting, otherwise I don't have any other updates.
There was no HPC meeting, even though Courtney tried to make me think there was. Obviously, STEMO days is coming up, September eighth through ten. You know, we've been talking about Southwest Transit, they have extended their hours now, so we do have bus service on two different routes in the city, if you want to come down, so from five to eleven PM. Then you don't have to drive, so you are welcome to come down and enjoy and have a safe ride home, if you wanna use that. It's planning as usual, met with the public services guys, and super helpful, thank you, Chad, and it's just been trucking along, hoping for good weather.
Good. All right, a few updates from me. Last Wednesday, Tom Emmer is opening a district office in Carver County. It is located in kind of the Hazeltine Office Building, right across from Starbucks and Kohl's, and of course, Hazeltine, there's a McDonald's back there. The address is eleven oh seven Hazeltine Boulevard, so he will have it staffed with one of his folks. And if the things that you go to your congressman's office include things like social security and Medicare claims, federal tax returns, Veterans Affairs benefits, small business administration loans, postal service issues, passport requests and immigration issues, military records and service medals, and then service academy nominations, so kinda cool to see that he's prioritizing Carver County by putting an office right in our backyard. Before that, I reached, or what his staff member, Parker Nelson, who is gonna be staffing that office, reached out to me and said, hey, let's get together for coffee. I've been in this role for two weeks, and I'd love to learn a little bit more about Carver, and what you guys are all about, and what you need, and how we can help you. So we did that, and literally, it was on the Friday, bookending his second week on the job, so I think I can speak for Brent, I, and that we've always known Congressman Emmer to have really terrific staff, who has been really good about reaching out to us, so I think that it's gonna be cool to have them a little bit closer. Before that, I think their closest office was in Ock Segal or Delano, so a little bit further away. Let's see, I had a League of Minnesota Cities Board meeting last week, also had a Minnesota Mayor's Association meeting, which was why I missed the Business Alliance meeting. Eric, thank you for taking over that for me. And then I don't want to end this meeting without just recognizing Joy for all of her contributions. So when I was elected mayor, I vacated my council seat, and Joy was the person who I thought would do a really terrific job, and she did. She was easily the smartest one of us sitting up here. She never didn't come prepared to the meetings. She went through documents and contracts like nobody's business, where I'll admit to sometimes scanning through them, and I never once questioned that she had the best interests of the city of Carver in her mind. So I just wanna recognize Joy, I know that it was a decision that she really, really struggled with. She's got a really big job, she's got a lot of other stuff going on, so I think if she could have made it work, she would still be here with us, but just wanted to say a huge appreciation for former council member, Big Night, so. With that?
Agreed. I think we should all say agreed.
Let's see, so with that, if there's, oh
Closed session.
Oh, shoot, yes, okay. So do we have to adjourn this and then open up another meeting?
Nope.
Okay, but y'all don't have to go home, but you can't stay here, so, thank you for coming, have a good night.
There should be a motion in your material
There is.
to make to go into
Oh, okay. Do we need to physically move, or are we in here?
We'll do the motion during the open session, and then we'll physically go to the web room just because of the recording equipment, and then we'll come back to adjourn.
Okay. All right, so I would entertain the motion that is written down here about going into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero five, subdivision three C, to consider a potential offer to purchase nine point two-three acres of total property, making up Carver County PID four zero two four zero five one zero, and part of Carver County PID four zero two four zero four four zero.
We got a motion by council member Mock?
I'll second.
And a second by council member Perschmann. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Great, motion passes.
No, that's Wednesday. Okay, I see Brenda. Okay, so we're back, we were just in closed session, but now all we need to do is make a motion to adjourn for real.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by council member Perschmann?
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sayer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Good evening.